All right. Good morning. Thanks for joining us at the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? Please state your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
Hello. How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue. And I'm very thankful to be alive. I just want to say that yesterday I ended up finding out I was one of the nominees for the Forbes 30 Under 30 2025, which is very, very cool. I think we know what this city is. It's the second worst city for economic development according to Forbes. And I've done a lot of things to help our city and our county and our state for the future, for esports, for the tech space, to being innovative. And my partnership with 17th Circuit Court in Kent County has gotten me a lot of recognition and speaking to people in North Carolina that really want to duplicate this esports, the Youth Justice Influence Esports League. They actually want to help develop a business plan. They want to partner with colleges in North Carolina to actually do research on a program and how it could actually help with the state of health for citizens and young patrons. So this is very, very cool and very innovative. And I'm excited for this because I've put in a lot of work. I've been nothing but genuine and authentic. And I'm just Dee Jones everywhere I am. When I'm around you guys at certain events and I go to different events or around the community, I'm Dee Jones that with the politicians, just like I am with my friends in the hood, just like I am with my loved ones and everybody else. I'm just Dee Jones. I don't know how to be fake. I don't know how to pretend. I don't know how to just not be Dee Jones. I don't gossip. I don't do none of that stuff. I just focus on the vision and do positive things and just do cool, innovative things and put the city and county and the state on. And that's all I've done. And a lot of people seen that, even KDL, Lance, seen this, and he's like, yeah, Dee Jones, keep going, because they've seen innovative things and the cool things that esports have done for Kent County through our library system. And I think that education is a very vital thing to our society. And to be able to be one of the final people that Forbes look at for games for 2025. And I'm not even done with 2024 yet. It's just cool to just, I just feel so good and so beautiful. I ain't gonna lie, like, I feel so good and just thankful just to be able to give back to my community, to bring young kids from Kent County, board from probation in our government to the Ford Field and still hear about those stories. And I'll probably never end up not hearing about them. And they still want to bring other kids and other people to that facility still. So I'm just very excited to tell you guys that Dee Jones is one of the final people that Forbes is looking at for the Forbes 30 Under 30 for 2025. And I'm just thankful because I know what this city can do. I know what the city can be. And hopefully, we can all work together to make it a better place for everyone to live. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Dee. Thanks for your passion and your positivity this morning. Is there any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Could I get a motion for the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner McLeod. Is there support? Support by Commissioner Sparks. Any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next item is number three from the Administrator's Office, and it's regarding the Grand Rapids Whitewater Agreement Amendment.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve amending the February 2019 agreement. The First Amendment was back on March 24 of 2022 with the Grand Rapids Whitewater to extend the schedule for the project and to authorize the Board Chair or designate to execute the amendment. Summary. GRWW is a nonprofit foundation committed to raising funds to restore the rapids through a collaborative public-private partnership. The restoration of the rapids will provide social benefits to the community, which include providing educational opportunities to youth and increased recreational access and opportunities. The restoration is projected to have a significant economic impact on the region while becoming another factor in recruiting and retaining talent. The community anticipates inspiring regional stewardship of the Grand River. In 2019, the county agreed per Resolution 1220-18108 to provide up to 1.4 million in funding for the project payable once GRWW met three specific milestones in the development and construction of the project. The first milestone was met, and the first funding payment of $500,000 was made by the county. Additionally, the county agreed by Resolution 03242238 to extend the agreement until December 31, 2024. Due to additional permitting delays, the schedule for the remaining two milestones and associated funding payments needs to be extended. The parties have agreed to new milestone deadlines of December 31, 2025 for $500,000 and December 31, 2026 for $400,000. Corporate counsel has reviewed and approved the amendment as due form.
All right. Thanks, Al. Is there a motion for this item? Is there anyone interested in making a motion?
Some of them.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden. Is there support? Support by Commissioner McLeod. All right. We do have, or all those, well, we'll talk about it first, but we do have Matt Chapman here, who represents Whitewater, and he can provide us with an update of the latest happenings with the Whitewater situation and get us up to speed on the project. Thanks for joining us this morning, Matt.
Yeah, good morning. Thanks for having me. And just a heads up, we will be joining the full body here later this month to do kind of a more detailed full update, but just a kind of a quick status update of where things are at. We have spent the last year and a half working closely with the city and the state and federal agencies redesigning the project. You all probably recall that the permit application had to be withdrawn in the spring of 2023. We have submitted permits for a new design that reduces the impact of the riverbed and kind of continues to build on the themes of habitat restoration, fish passage, and removing those dangerous dams. So those permits have been submitted. The Eagle and the state and federal agencies are still going through their permit review process. They did hold a public meeting, a public hearing, on August 25. From that, there's been no major comments, no major red flags, according to the information that we're getting from the state. So we're expecting to work through that process, hopefully have the actual construction permits sometime by the end of this year. You may also know that we just launched a mussel relocation effort, so we were required to remove federally endangered and state-listed mussel species. Thankfully, we had a really great dry weather over the last couple of months, and that work actually concluded just last week. So all of the mussel relocation work has been done ahead of time, which now kind of paves the way for the full construction. Hopefully, we'll begin by July 1 of next summer, pending permits. And of course, we need another summer of really good dry weather so we can get out there and get the work done. But happy to take any questions if you have those.
All right. Any questions for Matt? Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned dangerous dams. Are you talking about the removal of Sixth Street Dam or the coffer dams below it?
Great question. Sorry for the clarification here. So the first project that we're seeking permits for is just for the four low-head dams from Bridge, roughly Bridge Street down to Fulton Street. This project does not impact the Sixth Street Dam. That stays in place for now. Any conversations on that will actually be taking place through a separate permitting process that'll be led by the Great Lakes Fishery Commission, and the city of Whitewater will participate in.
Okay, because the coffer dams were there to widen the river, give it the appearance of being bigger than what it is, to add ripple. In essence, it's already done. What you guys are now going to try to do a little bit better. The Sixth Street Dam was part of the original equation because they had to remove that in order for this thing to happen. But then you got into permitting problems, you had Lamprey Yeele issues, you'd have to rebuild. This whole project is taken on a completely different look. And when we, and Al, you weren't here when we first started this discussion.
Nope.
And I've been opposed to this from the get-go only because the target keeps moving. The two young men that came in here originally, I don't know if anybody was here, maybe Matt out of this group, but they came in saying this was going to be a $4 or $5 million project. And they brought in renderings, and the renderings are beautiful, but the details is where they were lacking. And to me, it seems like a bait and switch, even though it's not an intentional bait and switch. You guys put forth the best effort you could, but we were sold something, a porterhouse steak, and we're ending up with a little Happy Meal. And I, I'm not trying to be funny, but it is kind of reality. I think we need to cut our losses at this point because this, this thing is nothing like it was originally going to be. They're talking about putting in some riprap to create a little bit more rapid. This was originally going to be a Whitewater destination. That's what we were sold. This was going to be economic development. None of that's going to happen now. Adding riprap is going to do nothing. I wouldn't mess with the river. You're not going to help the fishery. You're going to hurt it. The fishery right now is one of the top five urban fisheries in the United States as it is. So I don't see any reason to move forward with this. And I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but I've been watching this. I've been against it from day one because they kept talking about, yeah, we're going to get the permits, we're going to get the permits, we're working with DNR, NRC, Eagle, all this stuff. But I knew, doing my own research, it wasn't a slam dunk. I talked to the folks in Georgia who did a similar project that they kept talking about what a great economic driver that was. It isn't. It simply isn't. I did my due diligence on them. They say, yeah, we have some inner tubes coming down, but other than that, it hasn't done much for the city. And that was, you know, a similar plan that we were told to look at. I actually looked at it. So, Al, in my opinion, I think we should cut our losses. We invested in something that isn't coming to fruition. So to go to the extent of giving them another $900 million on a project that isn't even close to what it was supposed to be, I think that's not doing good for the taxpayers. And, yeah, they didn't hit their marks. They tried, so I'm against this.
All right. Anyone else have questions or comments? Commissioner Coleman.
Thanks, Chair. I, unlike Commissioner Antor, I voted in favor of this originally, and I voted for the first extension as well. I would clarify, though, it says in 2019, the county agreed per resolution. That's actually a December 2018 resolution. So it's, it's been a while, and the, I mean, it's, it's sad to me that at this point, I agree with Commissioner Antor on this one. The project, I mean, even, even the, the name, you know, Grand Rapids Whitewater was, is cool, right? Like, restore our namesake, the Grand Rapids, right? Like, it's, it had that cool factor. And sadly, I don't remember if it was, you know, EPA that denied that or some state agency or something, but like, so we can't do that. There's just red tape after red tape, you know, bureaucracy after bureaucracy. And so I know Grand Rapids Whitewater's tried hard, but like, even the name at this point is a misnomer because we can't do the Whitewater. And so to me, I think the, the project has, has kind of moved from cool to lame, which is sad. But I'm, I'm also opposed to extending this. I think we should keep the taxpayer money at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if I can address him or not.
Just address the chair.
Okay. When they do come before us, he made a comment that they will plan on coming before us in a couple of weeks. Could he address some of these, these issues? Commissioner Antor said 900 million. Is that, was that the Happy Meal price or is this the?
It's 900,000.
Okay. I was about to say, you said 900 million. I, I didn't. I was looking like, where's that at? So if they could maybe address where they see this project going, some more of the timeframes.
Matt, do you want to address that, you know, today?
Certainly, yeah. We can bring some visuals and, and address that as well. And Commissioner Antor, you know, understand your, and appreciate your concerns. You're right, it is a complex project, and yes, there is a tremendous amount of bureaucratic red tape. What we've done over the last year and a half is working closely, even closer than before, frankly, with Eagle and the state and federal agencies. So I mean, we met in April of 2023, outlined new framework objectives of what we had to accomplish in this river, trying to achieve as much of that original vision as you mentioned. Largely, it was driven by the mandates and the evaluations from EPA and Eagle of their interpretations of the state and federal statutes, which requires you to basically do the least amount of impact possible for any project. Unfortunately, for a restoration project, that means the least amount of restoration, right? So we had to actually reduce that footprint, as you mentioned, significantly. But everything we did over the last year was, was and still is designed to make this river better, improve this river. So these low-head dams, even the four smaller ones, do present pretty significant public safety hazards, especially the one by the Bridge Street Dam. A lot of people realize the Sixth Street Dam is bigger, more dangerous, but those other ones are just as dangerous. They also present issues to fish passage, so migrating fish, salmon, steelhead have no problem getting over those, but some of our other native non-jumping fish species do not get up there. So the goal of the project from one, from day one has also been to improve the ecological value of the river, the habitat of the river. And the new design will do just that. So we replaced these four structures. We have two kind of big channel-spanning structures that use natural boulder to emulate some of those rapids, so that we'll have some big, long riffles that, again, were designed for fish passage and habitat improvement for our endangered mussels. And then what you'll also see throughout the entire reach is the use of very large, scattered boulder. And that's, again, kind of similar to historically what was in this reach of the river. So it was believed below Bridge Street was a boulder kind of strewn rapid of limestone and bedrock boulder. So that will be back. Again, every one of those boulders is an opportunity for fish habitat and additional fish habitat. That river has been scoured out right now. So, so the, the project will bring Whitewater back. We will have rapids back. I, I don't disagree that it is a different project, and we've been trying, tried to be transparent to this body and to all other funders on that. And what we have now in front of the state for review is really the absolute best project, and we push hard to get the best project for the river and to tie into all of the other community investments that are taking place along the river corridor. So when you look at the investments in the amphitheater, the Greenway, the trails, having a river that's accessible for people to get into is, is key to that, and we do have additional access opportunities here as well.
Could I just, real quickly?
Excuse me, Commissioner Antor, do you have a question?
Well, he addressed me, so I was just gonna.
I'm the chair.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question.
Is there anyone else that has a question that hasn't asked yet? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. You know, more just a comment, I, you know, to echo the sentiments previous, I, I understand the frustration with this timeline. Given the fact that this change in an agreement does not change the appropriation that's been designated, we're not increasing our funding for it. And as someone who has personally seen smaller projects delayed because of Eagle review processes, I empathize with, you cannot predict this timeline as well as others. And I also would just simply, kind of building on what the gentleman just said, there may have been other initiatives to restore, for river restoration that have not been as successful. I highly doubt those initiatives had an amphitheater, a potential soccer stadium, and an entire Greenway Trail network connecting the mouth of one of the largest freshwater lakes in the country all the way through our community. I just can't help but see this as a value benefit despite the longer timeline. So I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that has not answered a first, or asked a first question or statement? All right. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned that part of the reason why the dams are being removed, safety issues. Well, the biggest reason why they're putting a cave out on the originals because of safety issues. They said it was unsafe to do what you guys were proposing. You also mentioned that these fish, which fish are not getting past some coffer dams? Can you name one single?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the more native, non-jumping fish. So we're expecting bass, catfish, you know, that, yes, they're up there, but again, the, we've got a significant amount of modeling results that show the velocities that these dams provide, and the new structures that are, are being proposed actually improve that and create slower-moving water so that more fish can get upstream.
That's just patently untrue. I mean, it's, your information that you're getting is just not true.
It's information that was also developed in coordination with the Fisheries Division of Michigan DNR. We worked closely with them to, to increase these fish passage opportunities.
It's the fifth-best urban fishery in the country right now. So you're saying it can't be very good? Those coffer dams are nothing. They can't get through there. They can't get past Sixth Street Dam, but that's going to stay intact. So the whole logic is just totally skewed. There's not a fish that isn't making it through there. There's bass, there's walleye, every game fish in the state of Michigan makes it through there no problem. Where they have a problem is when they get to the Sixth Street Dam, which is going to stay intact. So I've been fishing there my whole life, both below and above the dam. There's no shortage of any fish under the sun. So I would say we don't want to make that argument because it's not true. Yeah. If anybody wants to go down and look at the coffer dams, it's, it's like a nothing burger. They're really low. They create a little bit of rapids. Fish can get through there. So I just want to point that out. If we're going to be moving forward, we need to be moving forward based on what's real and not more conjecture, because that's what we've been dealing with, conjecture here. Thank you.
All right. So the item on the table right now is regarding the changing the date for the deadline for this funding. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you. I was going to finish before, just when they do come back before us for that presentation, I would like to see some letter of support, maybe some other individuals to come with them to kind of show us where we're at with support from the community. Because I agree with Commissioner Wooden, if there is not any more money being poured in, we don't want to undo everything that's already been done. So, and this is a huge project, and whenever you're dealing with Mother Nature, you know, things happen, so.
You know, I would add to Commissioner Wooden's statement too about, you know, the amphitheater, the potential soccer stadium. There's been a lot of activation along the river in conjunction with this particular project. So, you know, I can understand all the, the red tape that's gone on. It's tough to get through the layers of red tape through government, especially when you're dealing with, you know, something so small and minute, like the snuffbox mussel that has been a problem. So, you know, it's, I understand why there's been delays and why there's a need to push back the deadline for this funding. And we're not, you know, changing the amount we're giving. It's the same amount. It's just giving the longer time to, you know, work with the levels of government that need to be worked through. So that's, you know, what's on the agenda today. Is there any other question or comment? Any questions for Matt Chapman here? All right. So thank you for working with us today, and we look forward to seeing you again in a couple of weeks with more, you know, of a presentation. But today, we're voting on the date for this funding. All right. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so we've got it on, on the record, can we do a roll call on this one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor. Actually, you know what? Commissioner Oliver King has it.
Sure. I know that Commissioner Antor has.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate. I just was kind of curious because we're not doing so much of the original project, including building a Lamprey Yeele Dam, and we're not taking out Sixth Street. What is the cost done? I mean, from where were we at at our peak and where is it at now since we're not doing all that?
So again, that, that project, the replacing of the dam and potentially a new Lamprey Barrier, that'll be a separate project. The Great Lakes Fishery Commission is the international agency that's tasked with managing that. So they will be going through a whole new EIS process that'll look at all, all the different alternatives. So we, we don't have any costs available on that right now for the upper reach. The lower-reach project is, right now, the preliminary estimates are roughly 20 million, 22 million for the construction budget. That's something that the city and Whitewater have been working through as now that the permits are finalized and we've got more 90, you know, closer to 90% design drawings. We're working to try to finalize sources. Obviously, rock is expensive, transporting rocks is expensive, so we're trying to narrow that down.
Okay. And I appreciate you. And I'm not beating you up as you're the messenger. But 20 million is, what was the original number for the lower project? It's, it's got to come down since we're not doing half of what we're doing. So do you know what the original number was?
Yeah, the original number for the lower reach was roughly around 19 million. That was, again, probably back in 2019. So we have had smaller footprint, but as many of you all know, costs of everything have escalated, construction equipment, materials, labor costs and things like that.
So it's gone up. $3 million, and we're doing half of what we were going to do.
Again, we're trying to finalize those costs and zero that in. So I don't have a final cost for you today, unfortunately.
But it's gone up, and we're not doing what we, that's the bottom line here, folks.
All right. Commissioner Oliver King. Okay. No questions. All right. Anyone else? All right. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. I can vote in favor of this today, but I do think that if this is scheduled to come before the full board next week, it would be good to get a little bit more substance to our presentation to the board at that time. We might be splitting hairs, but I do think there's two different discussions here, whether we move forward with the amendment to the agreement, which I think is fair. And then as a separate, you know, Commissioner Wooden mentioned that this, we have a timeline laid out for what the funding looks like, but that this doesn't necessarily obligate us to appropriate that funding. Am I interpreting that correct, Al?
If a deadline was missed, then you're not obligated to do that, correct?
Okay.
And so by renewing this, you're extending the deadline, which does then recommit the funding.
Okay. Okay. So I think we should just have a more robust discussion about that when we take this up as a full board. So I'm in favor of moving that conversation there, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Regina, will you please call the roll?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Wooden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver King?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
No.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Antor?
No.
Chair Breevy?
Yes.
Okay. You have two nays and seven yays.
Motion passes. All right. Onto the next item. Item number four from the Administrator's Office. We have the West Michigan Welcome Plan Annual Global Gathering and Maximize Economic Potential Event donations.
Okay. Action requested. Okay. Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appropriate $9,450 in donations for the West Michigan Welcome Plan Annual Global Gathering Event and $5,500 in donations for the Maximize Economic Potential Summit to the Kent County Welcome Plan Budget and the FY 2024 Special Projects Fund. Summary. The Welcome Plan was created with 36 partners to identify initiatives that welcome and support refugees and immigrants in community engagement, economic well-being, safety, education, and access to services. The continually expanding Welcome Plan Collaborative currently includes 50 organizations. The Administrator's Office is expecting to receive $14,950 in donations from community organizations to help support the Global Gathering Event on September 28, 2024, and a Maximizing Economic Potential Summit on September 27, 2024. The Annual Global Gathering Event will showcase cultural experiences and is part of National Welcoming Week activities. Welcoming Week fosters inclusive communities and recognizes the contributions of immigrants and refugees. The Economic Summit is focused on connecting community to workforce development agencies using international degrees in the U.S., credential translation and evaluation in West Michigan. Organizations contributing funds include National Heritage Academies, Bethany Christian Services, Refugee Education Center, Experienced Grand Rapids Network 180, City of Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids Community Foundation, Grand Rapids LGBTQ+, Healthcare Consortium, River City Grant Writing, Global Detroit, and Tree Tops Collective. These funds will be used to offset the cost of hosting the events.
All right. Thanks, Al. Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Sparks. Is there support? Support by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions or comments regarding this item?
Yes. Sorry. Al, I think I had a discussion the first time the group came in, we talked about this, about the status of an immigrant. We're all pro-immigrant, but there's a difference between legals and illegals, and they didn't really do a great job, in my mind, conveying how they're going to separate people that are here legally, because we don't want to be complicit in rewarding people that aren't here legally and may be deported shortly.
Sure, yeah. And this, I think, was highlighted a few years ago when counties were required to take up resolutions to authorize refugees, refugee programs to continue.